Good evening, it is 7:06 and I am calling, I will call to order the town council regular meeting for October 5th, 2020. Or, can you please take the role?
Sure, Councillor Schoen.
Present.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Present.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Present.
And President Mellon.
Present. Thank you, at this time, I will ask everyone to keep joining us, stand and join us in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to the 45th Street construction update. Do we have Mr. Randall on the line?
Mr. Daley is on the line.
Mr. Daley.
Good evening, I am on, Lee should be on momentarily.
Can you adjust the volume really quick, Brad?
Sorry, what's that?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying, I, um, Lee should be on momentarily, he was having some technical difficulties. So I can, I can start and fill in with what I do know, um, which, obviously, uh, at this point, CN is on site. Um, and they have mobilized and started operations to, uh, switch trains from the shoe fly back on to, um, what will be the new tracks on the underpass. Um, so that, at this point, is going to take them, they're estimating two to three weeks. Um, so once that is done, then we can proceed with the rest of the underpass construction. Um, work at the underpass itself is ongoing with retaining walls, um, and excavation in terms of, uh, getting ready for the rest of the pavement, but we'll be able to start on the north side of the underpass once the shoe fly is out of the way. Construction on Calumet, um, I will have to defer to Lee once he gets on, but that's ongoing. Um, and at this point, we are tentatively shooting for the end of this month, uh, 1st of November to have everything on Calumet wrapped up. So, I realize that's an abbreviated version, but like I said, uh, Lee should be on here in just a minute and then we can, if you have any further questions or want more detail, he can, he can provide that.
Thank you. Um, I think we'll move, should we move on to your public comment?
Do you have a question, Councilman Gardner?
We can come back, if, is it bringing them back?
I think so, we'll wait, is, if Lee's trying to access right now, we can move on to the consent agenda and, doesn't have you just let us know when he's on.
Alright.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, the public hearing first, yes. We have the public hearing for, I will open the public hearing for the additional appropriations, 2020 general obligation bond ordinances, 1808 and 1809. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the council regarding these items? Ms. Anderson, is there anyone, um, on Zoom who is, no. Okay. Uh, seeing that there's not, I'll say going once, um, everyone shaking their head, no, that, that isn't attendance though, so, we will, I will now close the public hearing. That takes us to the public comment section of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council this evening? Just go to the podium and please state your name and address.
I'm Nancy Fung, I live on Behring, 8440 Behring, and our block, a commercial, uh, building on it, well, it was a house, I assume, the corner of North Coe and Ridge. And they're getting to be better neighbors, but, uh, code enforcement, it seems, has a hard time getting them to comply. They have a very large mansion, park in the back, it's not, if they, okay. They take old junk vehicles and just park them on either the driveway or behind the building and, they've been told now they need to at least put licenses on them.
Okay.
Kind of a junkyard situation, nothing that you can do about it, or the big dumpster. I mean, I think it's an office, it's not. I think they had any cracks or anything in there, I don't know.
Okay, can you, you said this was on the corner of North Coe and Ridge? Yes, okay.
And it's zoned residential?
No.
No, nothing.
It, it, it's an ink building on, on Ridge Road, it, it's been there for a very long time.
IMC, is it?
Yeah, IMC, yeah.
That's the one on, that's on the north side of Ridge?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, okay.
They also have two temporary plastic structures, it's real odd, different things are in at different times. I think if it were a homeowner, people would say, that's not, that's a sort of, that's a good one, please. That's fine.
Thanks, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there anyone else like to speak this evening? Ms. Anderson, do we have anybody, uh, email?
We, we did not, and Mr. Randall is on by phone, if there were detailed questions that you wanted to ask him.
Okay, let's, um, go back to the 45th Street, or close the public comment section and move back to the 45th Street construction update.
Yes, this is Lee Randall with the LZ, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Alright, sorry about that, had trouble with the computer, still wasn't able to get on. I'll go through the, uh, update if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay, um, as far as 45th Street, uh, between Calumet and Southwood, uh, retaining wall construction is ongoing there at the underpass. Uh, as far as the architectural surface treatments, uh, staining on walls one and two, which are south of the underpass, they're closest to Centennial Village, is ongoing. Uh, backfill of the underpass walls has been completed, the pedestrian bridge, uh, has been delivered to the site and set in place. Uh, underpass waterproofing, including that top slab, was completed this weekend. Uh, CN crews arrived on site today to begin, uh, track cut over operations, that's expected to last about two to three weeks. Uh, underground storm sewer installation then on 45th, just east of Calumet will be ongoing as well, resume this week. Um, and then on Calumet Avenue, uh, construction of the southbound lanes were completed, we switched traffic, last Friday, so traffic is now in the outside lanes, northbound and southbound. There's a southbound right turn and a northbound left turn lane. Uh, there is one lane eastbound, which then allows you to also make a left turn or a right turn, there's two lanes at the intersection. Uh, temporary traffic signals there at that intersection have been removed. A sob that was placed on the west side of Calumet and north side of 45th continues to be watered. Uh, fiber optic relocation, uh, was completed and ongoing testing is taking place. And then, I, I know that, uh, we had talked about the asphalt resurfacing of that temporary walk, that is still to be determined, but I would anticipate that probably within the next couple of weeks, because, uh, resurfacing should be probably completed around the middle of this month, if not the week of the 19th, including, uh, pavement markings there on that section. So if there are any questions regarding the update or projected schedules, I'll be happy to take those at this time.
My only question would be, is after CN completes their work, how many more weeks do you have anticipated for the underpass to be completed on the, where the CN tracks are at right now?
Well, our current schedule with acceleration puts us into December, uh, depending on how long it takes them, they've indicated two to three weeks, but they've, they've also said that the track cut over should be completed within two weeks. They would still be on site that third week, doing some, uh, resurfacing and, uh, de-stressing of the rail due to the ambient air temperature, but I'm hoping, uh, once they really kind of mobilize on site, we'll be able to determine that, hopefully they'll, we'll be able to start work that third week as well and try to shorten that duration to at least the, the beginning of December.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Lee, this is Steve.
This is Steve.
We've been waiting for the CN team to show up, so very glad they're here today. Any indications if everything is going alright, or, uh, in, in terms of cooperation with that, with that team?
Well, they had a very small crew on site today, we're expecting larger crews tomorrow, also bringing in the ballast so that course aggregate that goes, uh, directly below the track and the ties. So they were just doing some miscellaneous items, seems like they were just kind of getting familiar with the site, at most on that very east end near Southwood, uh, today, so I'll know more hopefully tomorrow, or a little bit later this week, but they're still telling me that it's, you know, that schedule, that they anticipate switching those tracks, uh, both sets of tracks, the next week, the week of the 12th.
Okay, thanks for monitoring, that sounds like a good, a, a start anyways. I did get a call this weekend from a resident in West Lakes, I'm not sure if any other councillors did as well. Um, she had said that the current traffic situation, the best I could tell from her description, is eastbound on 45th turning south, or turning north onto Calumet, that left turn. She said it was quite confusing, uh, dangerous and, and something like guaranteed there will be an accident. Um, so I said I would mention it tonight, uh, at, at the meeting, are there, does that resonate with you at all? Is it a, is it a tricky turn situation with the latest management of traffic?
Uh, this was over the weekend, is that correct?
Yeah, I think she called on Saturday.
Okay, um, no, I mean, we've, we've essentially got eastbound traffic, because they've got two lanes, so let's call it a left and a right lane. Uh, like a passing and a driving lane. That left lane i- is what eastbound traffic is, and then when they approach the intersection, we also have the left turn lane. So, uh, there's, there's three signal heads for all three lanes, so the right two are, you know, red, yellow, green balls, and then the one on the left, where the left turn has a, a green arrow. Uh, I'll certainly look into that, but I, I'm not entirely sure, um, like, perhaps what that confusion may be. I'm unaware of anything, at least at this point.
Lee, I'm thinking maybe if she experienced the traffic prior to the signal change, uh, and the shift in traffic on Friday afternoon, it was pretty bad during the middle of the day on Friday, as we were, uh, taking down those temporary, those old lights. So, uh, if she experienced that and came back a different way and assumed that the situation was still there, that might be the cause of her concern, because it was pretty bad.
Yeah, no, that, uh, pretty fair assessment, because prior to that, uh, most of Friday, that was basically a four-way stop. So, you're probably correct in that assessment.
Okay, yeah, by your description, it sounds, I haven't been out to look today, but it sounds like now we have three lanes, uh, and signals, so that's the first time we've been in this configuration.
Yeah, we've still got one through lane restricted, only because we don't want people going straight through. Um, so we've basically got one through lane for right turn to go southbound, and then the left turn lane for northbound.
Okay, uh, thank you very much.
Certainly, yeah, if there's anything more, please let me know.
Will do, thank you.
Any other questions this evening? Alright, thank you very much, Lee, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
We have a motion in a second, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes. Five zero, thank you. Moves us to old business, uh, ordinance 1806, which is the 2021 budget adoption, this is the second reading.
I move that we adopt the, uh, ordinance 1806, a second reading, yes.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? We talked about it last, um, on the first reading, so seeing that there is no discussion, I will ask, uh, Treasury Minister, please call for the vote.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
President Mellon.
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you. We'll move to new business, um, item A is ordinance 1807, Schedule A, the 2020 planning zoning and engineering fee revisions. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Vanderwood here to discuss this with us.
I will stand at the podium, if that's okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I, tonight I'm presenting, um, some revisions to our planning, zoning and engineering fees. About a year ago, we took a look, a close look at what we were charging, uh, for essentially planning, commission, board of zoning appeals, applications, and we wanted to determine whether or not we were actually recouping the costs that we expended on those applications for consultant review fees, specifically engineering and legal, uh, fees. And, um, so in, in conducting that review, uh, we did make a few findings, uh, which I included in the memo that, uh, you have in front of you, but I'll summarize them, uh, very briefly. Essentially, we had a very low fee, which we charged at the time of the application, and we don't charge any additional fees if there are additional reviews required, so for example, object is tabled multiple times, we continue to review the submittals, but we don't, uh, charge any additional fees. We also, uh, charge much less than what a typical review would cost, even under, um, you know, the best of circumstances with single review. Uh, we're not recouping those, um, engineering or legal fees. Um, so in a sense, we're kind of subsidizing, uh, those applications. We also discovered that, um, for example, uh, we only have one plan commission fee and one board of zoning appeals fee, um, but we have different types of applications that require different levels of review, so we may have a subdivision, that is extremely complex, requires, you know, review of a new street intersection, detention pond and that sort of thing. Uh, whereas we have other projects that are much more simple and they don't require a lot of, um, review, we're charging the same. So, it's not really equitable in that sense. And then, uh, we also noticed that we're not charging for engineering inspections. Uh, so, uh, after a building permit is paid for, we're conducting these inspections, but we're not really collecting for them. So, um, what we've done in response to that is we, uh, worked with SEH to identify some costs, um, and have them sort of guarantee certain costs for different types of reviews, and we also did an analysis of our legal fees to determine the typical cost per application. Uh, what we've done then is provided a set of revisions to Schedule A, which is our schedule, our fee schedule, and accompanying ordinance to enact those changes, and those are in for me tonight, or.
Thank you. You want to say, if someone has questions, then?
Um, the schedule, or exhibit A, Schedule A? Yes. This is the entirety of the new fees, is there any reference to what the previous fees were, or is it just the blue ones that have changed, or how should I read this?
So, that's a good question, yeah, the, the exhibit A, the new fees are shown in blue, and the fees that are being removed are shown as, shown in red with, uh, straight through, so those begin on page four. Uh, you'll see there, plan commission and board of zoning appeals, uh, you'll see 350, 350, 350, uh, so on, 300. So, the, the, the change that we're proposing is, uh, pretty substantial. Um, in some cases, it's a tenfold increase in the fee, um, but it's, uh, we, we're not taking a profit on these fees in any way, we're simply, as I said, recouping the consult costs, we've added a 15% administrative fee to, to it, so that would be the entirety of the, the funds that actually come back to town.
Tom, I got a little question for you, so if you go to section D where you have scratched off for approval of a plot, one to five plots, what would that typically cost a minimum like doing that type of project? Would it cost cheaper than?
Oh, is it so?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we were charging 350 for, so the approval of a plot, plot, one to five lots, which is $350, what would that cost somebody with the changes that we're doing?
Oh, oh, okay, so under the.
Item B is the first one.
It would, um, depending on whether or not it was a residential or a sub, or a commercial subdivision, if it was a commercial subdivision, the cost would be $2,530, and if it was a residential subdivision, um, it would be $1,265.
And this is like, like you said, the, these haven't been, when was, when were these adopted? Quite a while ago, because we're finding that we're, we're spending a lot more time and resources to get through these, and that's basically, like you said, there's no, not to make money, it's to not lose money.
Right, uh, I don't know when they, when these, these were adopted, I can tell you that no one in my office was here when the inherent fees, so, um, we had somebody who's been there for five years.
Does this need to vary?
Yes.
Tom, you, you had mentioned that we're charging much less in your review, and I was just curious what the benchmark is for that. I understood versus actual cost. I'm curious, and maybe Mr. Westland knows something about this from surrounding communities, is there any benchmark from, for doing the same work in Hammond, for example? Um, if, if, if these new fees are in line with generally expected and accepted, or?
That's a good question, I don't know offhand what it would cost to Hammond, to do this type of work. I can tell you that I did sort of true check all the fees to make sure we were not completely, because it's such a, you know, large increase. I did check it against various other communities, for example, central Indiana that we often consider our peers, and I found that they are in line.
The new fees are in line with.
Yeah, 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 the fees that we charge now are much lower than, like in any, in these communities that I checked.
And, and I'm just wondering if there's any thought to, um, the other question that I have is, for your average resident, you know, for the things that are most commonly done, I think for like the large developments makes total sense for average resident. I'm curious how much of this they're gonna, how, how much they're gonna experience, you know, in a, in a standard sort of year? And if that's very large, and we might think about phasing it in, but if there's sort of ones in a lifetime projects that you're doing.
I would say that, um, of the, the things shown here, um, the average resident would likely, would likely be touched by this change, only in the sense of, um, variants. So typically, you know, your average homeowner or resident would come before the plan commission, would board zoning appeals, for variants requests, that's, that's it, uh, commercial subdivisions, I mean, those are primarily new businesses, and, uh, by property itself, or consolidating.
About putting up events, in fact, that's probably one of these black costs that hasn't changed.
No offense, unless it's, uh, not permitted by our zoning ordinance, you would have no need to pay any one of these fees, you would technically pay the building permit fee.
And if I want to come in and put a garage that's outside of the, the code, then I'd be paying this?
Yeah, that would be considered a developmental, sort of development standard variance, okay, that would, the fee increase would, it's currently $300.
Okay. All right. Just taking that fee, developmental standard variance, is that a staff cost? That is, or is that something we, we, we farm out to, uh, our engineer, our local engineer?
Uh, we don't have any engineering fees included in those, uh, board of zoning appeals, application fees, application fees, because we typically do not involve our engineer, um, variants requests or conditional uses. Um, usually, the only, if this even shows, the bulk of it would be the fee that we pay for the legal review, having the attorney at a meeting, hearing the case, reviewing the staff report and drafting findings of fact.
Okay, so, so that fee, there's no staff cost really, but that, that's being a, the attorney's fee plus 15%?
Correct.
I, I guess I'm having a little trouble, and again, I, I appreciate you reviewing these fees, and I, I think it's, it's good that we, we do look at these things, and I do think there's some increases that are needed. Um, going through, I, I see five pages of, uh, fees on the, in the ordinance. Are the majority of those fees staying the same, is it, because right before the meeting, we received this existing fees, you know, when I asked, compare the existing fees to the proposed fee, so we can get some better idea of which ones are being raised. And, and we got a one page write-up on that, is that the only fees that are being raised?
Yeah, and then actually, the, the other fees shown on this, um, exhibit here are building permit fees.
And those are staying the same?
Those are staying the same, those were actually revised in 2017, so those were revised, I guess, three years ago. Um, at the, at that time, planning and zoning was not revised, there just wasn't anyone to take a look at and make that change.
I, I still would like, uh, again, I don't have really a problem with this, I, uh, again, this is why there's two readings, I don't have a problem approving this on first reading this evening. I would like to be able to compare some of the existing fees, um, with the new fees, I, and just make sure we're, we're in line. Uh, part of this, I certainly understand, uh, there's a staff cost to some of this stuff, but it's also, um, make sure that, that staff is efficient in reviewing these things, and we're just not passing these on to developers and whoever else, you know, some of the small people, you know, small businesses that want to do some things here in town too. Um, I do think there's, it's probably overdue that we look at these fees, but I do want to look at these a little bit more in detail, act, be actually comparing new fees to old fees, but I'm fine with, uh, approving this in first reading.
So I would move to, uh, accept ordinance 1807 on first reading and schedule next reading for the next business meeting, which I believe is October 19th.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, um, any other questions? I don't, yeah, I think everybody's asked, so at that point, at this point, please call for the vote.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And President Mellon.
Yes.
Five zero on first read.
Thank you. That brings us to item B, the ordinance 1808, 2020 geo bond, adopt, uh, we're looking to adopt this on first read. And eight, 1809 as well.
Yes, please, and I'll talk about both of them together, and Trish, if I missed something, please jump in. Um, each year, the town, the park department has typically issued two separate bonds in an effort to save money and issuance costs, we're combining them. There is a bond threshold of five plus million dollars, we at 1.97 are under that threshold. Um, we have been strategically reducing the amount of the bonds over the years, and, um, after this year, we will likely begin increasing them. We have, uh, we had a department head meeting to discuss everyone's capital desires, and what you see in front of you is what it's been whittled down to, and it does total the 1.97 million. Um, some of the highlights, the financial software, which we approved two weeks ago at the last council meeting, so that's included in here for the bond. Of course sidewalk replacement, a new dump truck is in here, a boom arm, and then the police department has, um, put in body cameras, which they're investigating the cost of those. So, the ordinance 1808 authorized the issuance of the 2020 general obligation bonds, while 1809 authorizes the appropriations for the bond proceeds. So we're asking that you, um, at the public hearing, all good, so we're asking that we, um, pass this on first, wave of rules and pass this on first read, miss anything? pass this on first, waive the rules and pass this on first read, miss anything?
Thank you. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
So Luke, that's the easiest way to say it.
We have to take them separately, though, correct?
Yeah.
Eighteen oh, so.
Oh, okay. Then I move that we accept eighteen, whoops, I just lost the agenda.
Eight.
Oh, wait.
Eight.
Wait.
I lost it to Ken, so try one.
I've got writing in front of me.
It's me. Okay, I second Ken's motion that we're going to waive the reading.
Great, you know, I, I.
Suspend the rules and waive the readings and adopt on first reading as presented.
We have a motion and a second, any questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions on this. First, it said that we have been over the years pulling down the amount of the general obligation bonds for circuit breaker, and now we're starting to increase them slightly.
This is the same as it has been, so we didn't increase it in twenty twenty, this is our twenty twenty bond, but we'll use it to, we'll spend it in twenty twenty one.
Right.
We're not increasing it this year.
Okay, so they used to be up here and now they've come down and we sort of plateaued down here, and looking forward, we, we expect in future years to go back up.
We're, we're in the middle of the tunnel.
In the middle of the.
We're in the middle of the tunnel, every year after this will be a little bit brighter.
And then I'm just looking at a couple of the, of the items, the, I was curious about the software, because we approved it last time, the two hundred ninety-two thousand. And then I saw another hundred and twenty-six thousand. And then I'm just curious what that was.
That's other, it's coming out of other funds, what did we approve last time? I probably covered the whole entire cost.
It couldn't be mistaken, I had.
I'm pulling up last. We approved three ninety-four, three ninety-four, nine fifteen, and then an additional twenty-three thousand for a total project cost of four eighteen, eleven, one hundred and seventeen dollars. And that's coming out of various funds, not out of the bank.
Okay, that's very close to the number here. The next one I have, those numbers may be for you, it's not from the bond, but the five hundred thousand per HVAC replacement that might come from the CARES Act, I was just curious how that would be related to the CARES Act.
Air quality. It is confirmed with the Indiana Department of Revenue that an HVAC replacement will improve air quality enough that due to, that, that the U.S. Department of Treasury considers that a capital improvement towards employee safety, considering the airborne element.
Any idea when we're gonna find out if we'll get those funds?
Is it Friday is when the bid opening is?
Yeah, whether or not we get those funds. I've spoken with representatives at the state level that have authorized similar reimbursements to other municipalities in the state. So we're not on the bleeding edge of this one. Other, other people in jurisdictions have successfully, with the same or similar scope, had their HVAC costs reimbursed.
I might invite Trish Abbott to come up and do some clarification, because she has been filing, we have been submitting and been receiving reimbursement for CARES Act funds, and just to elaborate on this just a bit.
Right, and, and Justin's correct in what he's explaining about HVAC and how it would how it would be reimbursable. But what happened about a week or so ago, they decided that they would allow any public safety payroll expenses to be reimbursed, which was different from how it was before, if it was a public safety payroll expense, it had to be specific to COVID, now they've changed what they're accepting. And they want those claims first before anything else. And just a brief look at our payroll, we will probably use our entire allotment for that. So while the HVAC could be reimbursed, the Indiana Finance Authority wants to see those payroll, those police payroll things first, and I think that that's gonna consume the entire allotment. But there are sufficient bond proceeds available from prior bond issues to cover the HVAC system.
And our allotment is about.
The allotment was a seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, something like that, and we've used about forty thousand so far. And the guess is that that's why they've changed what they're allowing is because people didn't have such a specific COVID response, that they couldn't use the, the funds, and they want people using the funds.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Trish.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All right, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
I will, Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
President Mellon.
Yes.
Five zero, passing the general obligation bond ordinance eighteen oh eight. Then eighteen oh nine is the sister to that, where we, it assigns the appropriation.
I guess I'll make a motion that we, by motion, roll call vote, suspend the rules and waive the readings and adopt ordinance eighteen oh nine on first reading as presented, second?
We have a motion and a second, any questions for this? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And President Mellon.
Yes.
Five zero, thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to item D, Maple Leaf Crossing, Second Amendment to the Development Agreement. This has been requested because we had an issue with the transfer of property, because there were there were liens, possible liens against it, because anyway, it was recorded in the past, I don't know if you were, Westland, that Mr. Westland would like to address it.
No, I mean, you have it, there not liens, but there's certainly a cloud on the title, so we can't transfer the piece that's roughly an acre that you approved several months ago. Because in twenty oh nine, when the town took title to it, we took it by virtue of a quitclaim deed and we didn't at that time quiet title, which, you know, certainly would have been would have been more prudent than having to go do it now, right? But I don't know that anyone foresaw ever having to deed that property anybody, so we've probably figured no harm, no foul, if there's a cloud on the title, there's a cloud on the title, but at this point, to transfer that to Mr. Leeser and Maple Leaf Crossing, we have to remove that cloud, we filed a quiet title within the last month. We've had some of the potential claim holders already contact us and disclaim. We're just waiting on a couple more, so that certainly has put back the project, because the developer's not gonna proceed without having clear title of the property as promised.
And that is, that is reasonable, it wouldn't be it would not be advisable for a developer to do that if they don't have clear title, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, part of the property at issue is where that hotel is going. So theoretically, he would be taking a gigantic risk by not getting this tied up ahead of time, and would be malpractice for any lawyer to tell him to do it.
What do you need right now from us?
Prove the agreement, which buys him an initial one hundred and eighty days to start the construction, which gives me the time to finish the quiet title, so we can transfer the property and.
Do we expect there'll be any activity on the, on the site in this calendar year?
They want to, they want to start moving dirt as soon as they know that the quiet title, I mean, the agreement that's before you is, is I would it's not a completely worst-case scenario, but it leans more towards a worst-case scenario than it does best-case scenario, best-case scenario is that by the end of October, we're in a position where we can go ahead and start and transfer the property in November. You can transfer the property in November, there are certainly things he can do that he wants to do. You know, before the deep set-in of winter. But if, you know, if, if it takes longer than the end of October, and now you're into December, now you got the holidays, that's why there's an April one, twenty twenty-one start date plugged in there, because we, I can't give you a guarantee that I'm gonna have this thing wrapped up by the end of October. That would be the goal. And I think it's possible, I would even go so far as to say probable, but I can't guarantee it.
Thank you.
I will make a motion that we accept the second amendment, or that we approve the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement, providing an additional one hundred and eighty days to the developer, Maple Leaf Crossing.
We have a motion and a second, are there any further questions?
I only, I guess, comment more or less is, if, if and when we do transfer this title, is there any kind of tentative you know, construction or development agreement, or not agreement, but timeline that the developer can kind of give us, just kind of give us an update, I certainly understand that you can't do work out there now, but hopefully he's doing a lot of preparation, and it'd be nice, once we get this transferred, if we could get some type of an update from, you know, just how he envisions the process to move forward.
I think Jay would be happy to provide an update once we know a closing date is set. And then, and he'd be able to then project, all right, I've got this much time until the really bad weather hits, so this is what I'm gonna do in this time. Assuming a normal spring, this is what I'll do right after the vote.
Understand, that's the only thing I would ask.
All right. Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And President Mellon.
Yes.
Five zero.
Brings us to the next item, Nova Tech Automatic Transfer Switch Inspection Proposal.
Yes.
I'll look for it.
Yeah. Dustin, did you want to speak to this?
I, I do. And I'm sure you all are on the edge of your seats, for those of you listening at home.
I'm picturing Dr. Frankenstein.
So we have many generators in town, most of those generators are in service to the Hammond Sanitary District infrastructure. The district was kind enough to allow us to purchase those generators to run the pump stations and ensure, to a greater extent, the safety and wellbeing of our residents and businesses. Those generators need to be exercised occasionally, to make sure the generator works correctly, they're, they're a large technical pieces of equipment that you need special skill sets for. And understandably, the Hammond Sanitary District was reluctant to allow us to go in and touch those generators, because it was, you know, they're, they're valuable assets that we, we gave them and we want them to run, so there, there was a, a question of who is best suited to do that, they have a reluctance or a lack of capacity to come down here on a routine basis to exercise and make sure those are running. So we have proposed a solution that will allow Nova Tech to come and routinely monitor, exercise those generators to make sure they run appropriately. So this is a good thing for our residents and our infrastructure, so we, we would ask that you consider this recommendation that would allow Nova Tech to enter into a service proposal with the town to exercise twenty-two of our automatic transfer switches at twenty-four generators at an annual cost of four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, beginning in twenty twenty and twice a year thereafter.
These generators will require staff members to be present to, to start it up. And it's not, it's not an automatic start. I have a generator next to my house, it goes on at the same time every week. And I didn't know if these generators could, would be automatic that way?
They, they could be, but you want to lay, lay eyes on them, like a house generator, you're in your house.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't switch on, you probably know about it and you can just pop in the backyard and take a look. Much the same, you, you want to have someone pop over and take a look to see if it has automatically kicked on and exercised itself. So you do that on a periodic basis.
And my understanding, Ken, is that this is actually testing the switch, not just the generator running, so I have a generator as well, but it doesn't actually switch the power over on the house. It just makes sure the engine is running, and that's what they need to test, because it looks like ten years those switches have not been activated. And I was wondering, Dustin said something about Frederick, the station at Frederick that failed to switch over, do you, do you have any context on that?
I could follow up and give you a, a, a brief that I could share with you and council in greater detail.
Or maybe we can just talk offline, it's more curiosity, it's not really germane to this.
Sure.
Would this be funded by water fees and sanitation fees, or is it something that?
It would be sanitary and stormwater fees.
Okay. Yeah, maintenance is clearly cheaper than remediation, so.
For, for most of those, right, so some of those generators serve only, for example, the police and town hall and fire, right? There would be a mixture of funds, so we wouldn't use those fee-based funds to pay for the portion here.
Okay, thank you.
And this is something we're doing above and beyond what the Hammond Sanitary District does, this is something that we as a town of Munsters is paying for these items.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would move to approve the Nova Tech Services Proposal to exercise the town's twenty-two automatic transfer switches at twenty-four generators and an annual cost of four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, beginning once in twenty twenty and twice yearly in twenty twenty-one, as a preventive maintenance measure.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further questions? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And President Mellon.
Yes. That brings us to the postage meter lease.
I don't know how I can follow that up, but this is, this is more edge of your seat.
It's probably the one thing more exciting than the price.
How about if I do this, I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize leasing of the quadrant postage meter system for a period of five years at a lease cost of seven six, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-five cents a quarter. Second.
Motion and second, any questions?
I would just like to point out that this seems to save the town sixty cents annually. Fifteen cents a quarter.
No noted.
So important, thank you.
Wendy, can you please call the vote?
Counselor.
We'll fight over it.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And President Mellon.
Yes.
New postage meters for us.
Okay, this, um, that's great, thank you. This brings us to our last item under new business, which is the campaign signs resolution twenty-seven B four. We have two options, because at our last meeting, we discussed a resolution and we asked Mr. Anderson to bring us two options, because we were, we had, we had some opinions for both of them, and that's where we are now. One allows, this is what we will allow candidates to place signs in front of the town hall, which is a site for early voting, starting when early voting starts tomorrow. The other one says that we will only allow those signs to be placed on election day, so I, which I believe that would start at midnight on, what is it, November sixth? This year, okay, or whatever, whatever that date is.
November third.
Third, oh, is it third? Okay, tomorrow's the sixth, okay.
My only question about that is under the, number one, where we will not allow signs except, and it says through the sixth day after election day. I would, you know, I would prefer that it be until the first day after election day. I don't see any reason to leave things up for nearly a week after the election.
I think, I mean, my interpretation of that is, that's the state enrollment act four thirty-eight, if I'm not mistaken, that says in general throughout the town, you can have signs. up from sixty days before the election until sixty days after. So when, as candidates are going around to collect all their signs throughout the town, they can do that in coordination. They wouldn't necessarily have to come to town hall.
We're not talking about all the signs throughout the town. We're talking about the ones on municipal property.
I understand.
But if we need to be the same as the state, I have no objection. I just don't see any reason for signs, particularly at town hall after the election is over.
I think in practice, you won't find a person that disagrees with you.
Yeah.
And we, and this was brought, brought up because I think in the last, I've heard a couple of comments talking to staff that there are, people get goofy with their signs. They get very offended. One person was mad because someone else put their sign in front of someone else's sign and it's, it comes down to, do we really want the staff, the town staff to be spending energy and time on what's going on with signs? So by limiting it to, that was, that was one of the reasons for saying, limit it in this, in this spot just to election day so they don't have to deal with all of the, I will call it, high emotions that might come with the placing of signs. So that's, that's where we are.
And also, Dustin, option one is just the day of the election. Option two is starting tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Right?
What, are we doing discussion now or should we, do you want a motion first?
I can go with the motion. I don't care.
Okay, well, I would move to approve resolution two zero seven four. Option two. As presented. I'll second that. And my, my thinking behind going for option two, which is the one that would start tomorrow and go through the end. It's thought of staff and residents and candidates and voters. Sort of precedent, when we all ran a year ago, we were allowed to put and signed up in accordance with option two. It seems as well as in the primary. So we've sort of got a precedent there and it just seems fair to me to continue what we were doing in the, in the previous situations and also given that this year, as Dustin has noted in the weekly memo, we're expecting a lot of traffic for early voting, starting as early as tomorrow. So just want to give a consistent election experience to people if they come in to vote. That was my thinking on this one.
My suggestion under that, it says a town of Munster will not allow temporary signs on municipal grounds. What I'm thinking is, what we're saying is on this, on site of voting areas, town hall, we can have political signs for the month beforehand.
Option two.
When, yeah, option two. When I see municipal grounds, I'm, I only want political signs here at the town hall. I don't want them on other municipal grounds where there's no voting going on. So I guess I'd like that to be clarified, you know, in there that here is okay, but I don't want a community park, you know?
Not a community park not along Forty Fifth Street.
Not because those aren't voting sites.
Exactly.
Okay. What, what I have in mind is literally just the parking lot or that little parkway in the parking lot in front of the voting site.
Well, I was going to say the reason I like option two is because early voting is just as legitimate as election day. People come and vote. It's a real vote. It's a real cap. It's really cast. It counts the same. And if the signs are allowed on election day, I think they should be allowed on every election day, which would be, which would include early vote.
And while I would like to restrict where they go, I, unless we have, we're going to set aside a specific area right now. I think it's going to be challenging for staff as they go along with this thing. So if we want to say the center median, that's fine, or if you have a specific area, I'm good with that. But you're going to be out there tonight before we leave the meeting and I don't want staff to be messing around with all these signs for the next month and a half.
Yes, I, I, I don't intend to be restrictive here other than just, I mean, the, the sense of it is only a town hall.
Yeah, I agree with that.
My thought, thoughts, right, is that it's, I think it clutters up the yard and I don't, I think that part of our, you know, civic duty is to vote. But civic duty also is to educate yourself. So I don't know, when you walk into the booth, you see the candidate's names and what party under which they're running. I don't know what the signs, even on election day, I don't know what the signs do. I mean, if they have representatives out there to say, hey, you know, let me talk, I really know this person. I want to talk to you about it. That's one thing. But just a bunch of signs, I mean, you can say yard sale. I mean, I, I just think it's clutter and I don't, I think our town. I'm not, I'm not a real big fan of having, we have how many races going this year? And well, many times there will be a lot of races and then two, again, with the staff having to deal with the complaints of it, we can limit it to one, one day. I don't think that it, it hurts anybody not having a sign out there because they're all going to put one out, you know, it's, if you don't know who's running or, or what office is up for election, you probably.
Shouldn't be coming anyway.
I'm not, I didn't say that. But yeah, that's my vote. I, I mean, that's my thinking behind it, that election day is enough, but.
No, there's a civic responsibility.
I would even rather agree with it, too. I think there's just a lot of clutter prior to the election day, so. Well, and, and on the, just maybe a final comment for me on the idea of the signs not registering with, with, with people. I think of it like going to a grocery store, you know, when you see a Pepsi sign and a Coca-Cola sign, it sort of reminds you of, oh yeah, there's an ad or Pepsi's on sale this week. I was going to buy it. I almost forgot, but now I've got a sign that's striking until as a reminder of what my intention was. So it's just from a branding perspective. I think that's what the, that's what the value of the signs are, is to trigger people at the moment of making decision. Hopefully we're, we have people being respectful and not making trashy. But I think Dustin, not that staff should have to do or need to touch anything, but it is our property. If we think that it is getting out of hands, then as a council, we may be able to give you further direction at a, at a subsequent meeting or next meeting.
It's accurate that the council can resolve to direct however you choose to see fit.
We would need a separate resolution if we chose, if we decided that our decision up for the two, accept this resolution was not wise, right? Mr. West, we'd have to.
You would, and I wouldn't want to be the staff person the next day after that resolution.
I do have a question for you, Dave. The, the sentence says, be resolved by the council that the sense of the town council is. So the, if we adopt option one or option two, we're saying this is the sense. Does that make a requirement? Is it, it's not an ordinance then, is it?
Well, it's not an ordinance. It's a resolution.
Is it, is a resolution enforceable this way in the same sense that an ordinance is?
To answer your specific question, no. It's not the same as an ordinance, right? An ordinance, you can find people, an ordinance, you can do all that stuff. This is going to be an employee going out there and saying, this is what the council decided.
So if that's the case, then so then.
But a proper.
Either option one or option two. We have a staff member going out there. Someone puts up a letter of a sign. They literally are picking it up and pulling it off. Let's say we pick option one. Someone puts one on here in town hall. Are we going to have issues with someone trying to take us to court and go to the back?
No, I, I don't think so. I mean, I don't think you're going to run into town manager from a town to this south of here that got in all kinds of trouble for doing that, but. No, that was a specific example. That's the reason I bring it up. I didn't write this, okay?
This is my fault. I, I, I wrote it.
I'm trying to give you the different examples and my guess is that either Dustin or Wendy's office is going to go out there and try to enforce.
Right. We're not going to go at them. I would get in trouble.
You would.
I would.
As an elected official. But like I, personally, I don't like the sense of. I think you resolve, you're either going to do it or you resolve, you're not going to do it. It's not an ordinance, so it can't be enforced via fine, although I would tell you, you probably don't want to do this via fine because now you're going to get into an argument that, oh, well, you're picking on me because I'm from this group or that group and whatever. And, oh, that Dustin, he doesn't like so and so, so that's why, right? So I don't know that I would want, I would, I would not want you to be writing ordinances and be going into court to do this. But you know, I, I do think it's, it's always going to be problematic, whether it starts tomorrow or starts on election day when your staff is trying to enforce it.
It's only problematic for Dave, you pick option one, right? Or, or you need, or you need to, I mean, option two is less restrictive, so you have less things that you're trying to control. I think pick option one, people start putting them out. We need to enforce it basically from tomorrow until.
If I could say something here, why I do, I think it's very, it, it's ugly. It's, it's unappealing to have all those signs. And the, the early voting is even worse when you have other places in Lake County, other people that, you know, town of Munster people aren't, aren't even voting for, that their political signs are here because anybody in Lake County can go to any of the early voting spots. With that being said, though, I don't, I don't want to be the story the next month of taking down political signs. So I'm fine, and, and because we have had political signs here for the last three elections, including the two primaries and the general election last of November. I'm, I'm fine with the, leaving up different one. Because we're early voting, you want the whole part of our town hall to be full of signs where it doesn't even relate to the town of Munster? That's what you're saying right now?
Okay, I think also what I heard Chuck saying and to your previous point, Dr. Kulturitis, is we, we don't want to get in trouble for touching someone else's sign and we're almost at risk of being seen as doing that via resolution. If we go with this more restrictive approach. I think it'll save us from getting in trouble or making, stirring things up around the election. My turn.
I move for a vote.
Wendy, can you call a vote, please?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
No.
Counselor, President Mellon?
No.
This does pass three to two until a lot of signs in front of town hall beginning the first day of early voting.
That brings us to reports. There are no reports. What about portfolio reports? We'll start at your end, Steve.
I don't have anything to report. The Fire Chief has announced his retirement of the for July or January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. Forest Safety has approved a general process to announce the Fire Chief's position and to complete interviews and such over the next couple of months.
The new Munster Park Director is hitting the ground and moving rather quickly. Has met with Dustin and they've talked about some ideas and things of that sort and he seems to be acclimating very well to his new digs here. We have a work study with, with Mike Hawkins that will be scheduled, I guess, shortly to talk about concerns with the Hammond Sanitary District.
Thank you. My only report would be to everyone come out to support our Munster Police Department, the National Crime, National Night Out Against Crime, which is tomorrow. So it'll look different than past years. I'm, is this up on our website as well? Dustin, and all this that, so I want to read everything, but they will have parades going through the neighborhoods. We check it out. They are asking for canned goods to be dropped off.
I felt very selfish. I got the last blue lights from Gus Bach.
Did you really?
Yes.
Yes.
And they're, they're lighted now in the front of the house.
Okay, so if you haven't put your blue bulbs in your porch lights and you can still find them because it can, you know, it can, if you got some for the next years, too, maybe. But anyway, so that's, that's my support our, our awesome police department tomorrow night.
The census, for all intents and purposes, is over and Munster came in at eighty-four point five percent. I know everyone will miss my bi-weekly updates, twice monthly, but that's where we're at. I also, J O, Mark Heinz, the new park director, will be on W J O B tomorrow, the Town of Munster Show, and that's at eight thirty, or you can see it later, recorded on Facebook. And then Dr. Andy, probably the Civic Foundation, is heathering some steam and starting to meet and discuss some various options for the betterment of our town. And if anyone is interested in becoming, coming on there, they can fill out an application as they would for any board and commission. And that is either online or someone can email me and I can send them that application.
Okay, and so all town council meetings will begin at seven and last other ways noticed, are note, noted, our next meeting is October nineteenth, followed by November second and November sixteenth. That brings us to adjournment.
President Mellon?
Yes.
November second meeting is the Monday night before the election.
Correct, it is.
And, and again, I'm not sure if this room's going to be used for election, so there might be a temporary change and we might do it November second.
We'll look at.
Adjustment.
Okay.
Just to show you where I, so Dustin can, Tom Andrew can review that before next meeting.
Okay, yes, we have changed that in past, in the past because it's, it's disruptive and it keeps the, keeps them here later. We're setting up the polls, so we can, we can change that next on the nineteenth.
Change the location or change?
No, change the date. We'll talk about it on the nineteenth, yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you for that. That brings us to adjournment now.
So moved.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. Brings us, we'll move straight into redevelopment. We have, is Mr. Castro on the line with us?
Yes, he is.
I am.
Hello.
Greetings.
Hi, John.
Doing well.
Great. It is eight thirteen and I'm called to order the redevelopment commission regular meeting for October fifth, twenty twenty. Can you please call a vote?
Sure. Yeah, there's no real call on here.
Okay.
It's okay. I think I can handle it.
Yeah, you got it. Okay.
All right, Commissioner Schoen?
Present.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
And as noted, our school board liaison, John Castro, is also present virtually.
Thank you.
I am. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address during the public comment? Seeing none? Do we know emails? Okay, I will open and close the public comment portion of the meeting and take us to the consent agenda.
I move, we accept the consent agenda here.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes. There is no old business. Under new business, we have one item. It is the Maple Leaf Crossing, the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement, as was discussed. It is at the town council meeting. We, as the redevelopment commission, must address this as well.
I will make a motion to, move to accept the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement between the Town of Munster Redevelopment Commission and Maple Leaf Crossings. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I assume no questions since we've done that, correct?
No.
Thank you. Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes. We have no reports, no announcements. That brings us to adjournment.
The vote. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, take care, everybody.
Thank you, John, goodbye. And for the work study?
Bye-bye.
We'll be in here.